Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two, one, we're live.
And good evening, I'd like to welcome you to the thirteenth September Morganton Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. Tonight, we will be addressing on our agenda, one rezoning request, and I think we have a number of ordinance, zoning ordinance amendments we'll be looking at further in our meeting. You'll have opportunities if you wish to speak as we address items in our agenda. Kicking off, we have old business. Under item one was a review and approval of the August meeting minutes. Those were not due to a technical difficulty, we're not in front of the members of the commission in time, so I'm gonna move that we review and approve those at our October meeting. Moving on to item two, review of city council actions since last meeting. Does the city staff have information on that, please?
Yes, sir. So, the rezoning request, that was for Lyman Court, which was recommended for denial at this body, was appealed and was set to go to the city council. However, the applicant requested that that be deferred until it gave him time to work with his plans more, to develop those plans a little bit further before he brought it back before city council. So, that's, at present, it has not been, we're looking for that to come before council at the October meeting, but we don't have a definitive answer on that as, at present. The mobile food vendor ordinance went to city council at their meeting on September the tenth and was approved, and so you have that in front of us and ready to go. So, anybody that has a food truck that wants to locate in Morganton will be happy to talk to you about that and get you started and set up in business.
Any questions for Phil? Hearing none, we'll move on to, next item is, in the agenda is appearances. Is this an opportunity, if you have something in the audience that is not on our agenda tonight, you would like to bring to the attention of members of our planning commission, then we entertain that you step forward to one of the, or the only podium we have, and give us your thoughts and ideas. Okay. Seeing none, I'm gonna open our meeting up to new business. The first item on our agenda is a rezoning request that's been submitted to change the zoning of point seven, eight acres of property located at 500 West Fleming Drive, and that request is to change from a general business conditional use zoning, which was accomplished back in April of two thousand, I believe it is, April of two thousand fourteen. The request is to change the zoning to a current high intensity district zoning, which has now been submitted to us by Mole Incorporated. Someone on the staff like to take on the analysis?
Yes, sir. I will go over the rezoning here. So, on the PowerPoint slide above, you'll see the, the application was applied for, for general business conditional use to rezone to high intensity district, HID, at 500 West Fleming Drive by Mole Incorporated. In front of you there, you, you see our current zoning map, which shows a corridor district as well as HID zoning district at all the adjacent properties around it. Directly across Catty Corner is, is the North Carolina School of the Deaf, and then next to that map, you see our 2030 zoning map, which the, the red area that's within the 500 West Fleming Drive parcel is, in the 2030 map, shows general commercial and retail, which would be consistent with, with the rezoning that is before you today. So, back in April of two thousand fourteen, the property was, and this was prior to our new zoning ordinance, the property was rezoned from heavy industrial to general business to accommodate for commercial use of the property, which was similar along that corridor on West Fleming. This rezoning is to allow for all of the uses under HID zoning and conform to the surrounding parcels within that corridor. Below that, you see the conditions that were placed on the, on the conditional use permit back in two thousand fourteen, which mainly have to do with enclosing storage and, and screening with landscaping, which mostly are, are consistent with our new zoning ordinance. The zoning comparison, conditional use district, back before the new code, was a, was a zoning tool available in the previous zoning ordinance. Its intent was to allow zoning districts to certain locations that would, absent special conditions, be inappropriately zoned. The conditional use district was attached to a standing zoning district so that a property could be developed with special conditions that ensure the intent of the zoning ordinance was realized. The current zoning ordinance does not provide for conditional use zoning. That's why we're, the Moles are here today to apply for the high intensity district. The high intensity district's intent is to establish and accommodate high intensity residential, wide variety of civic institutional retail service and office uses along major arterials within the city, and to ensure these uses are, are attractive, functional, and do not have harmful effect on adjacent neighbors and other commercial areas of the city. The general business district under the previous zoning ordinance was the closest zone in comparison to today's HID zoning, and allows for similar, similar land uses with varying standards The public services available are consistent with the other public services along West Fleming. You can access this property from West Fleming Drive and also the, the adjacent street next to the property, which is Cox Street, which is a collector's street. There's water and sewer, both are provided at, at the, at the property. The plan, the plan use map for 2030, as I spoke to before, the city's 2030 future land use map indicates that the subject parcel and the surrounding area to remain is, is a commercial or general business corridor and encourage redevelopment and adaptive reuse projects that maximize the use of the site, and place, placing new buildings along street frontages, and redeveloping interior buildings for compatible uses. That's what the 2030 plan calls for this area. Future, for future rezonings, applications should fully take into consideration the analysis considering determining future land uses property as part of the 2030 plan. This rezoning would not constitute spot zoning because the adjacent parcels are all HID and everything along that side of Fleming Drive are, are also HID. The impact to surrounding properties, this rezoning consideration would allow for compatible uses to adjacent properties in the district as well as with the corridor, thus creating a more congruous zoning district. Possible other impacts are increased traffic and noise, depending on the use of the property, but those aren't unlike any other uses that would be allowed under the current HID. Staff recommendation for this rezoning, research in the twenty, into the 2030 land use plan as well as the zoning of the surrounding parcel show that rezoning this parcel from GBCU to HID would create a congruous relationship to the West Fleming Drive corridor. The City of Morganton Planning and Zoning staff recommends approval of the rezoning to create less segmented HID district along, to create a less segmented HID district along West Fleming Drive and better enhance this major commercial corridor, and would allow us to, to use our current zoning ordinance instead of a outdated CU zone.
Jesse, thank you very much. Is there anyone on the commission have a question, need clarification? Hearing, hearing none, I'm gonna open the, this portion of the meeting up to the public. If there's someone in the audience that would like to come to the podium and is either in favor or against this rezoning request, we'd like to hear from you. Okay. Seeing no one jump out of their seat, we will close the open public portion and bring it back to the board. Is there someone on the board that would like to make a motion?
I would move that we adopt the staff recommendation.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that will go to city council at the October eleventh meeting. I've got on my notes here, October, oh, I'm sorry, first, first of October, the first Monday of the month. Okay. Next item on our agenda, we're gonna get into some technical discussions dealing with ordinance amendments. The first one we have is a consideration of a text amendment to the current zoning ordinance, section four point three, which is to allow for increased density in the central business district by allowing additional performance points for infill and redevelopment projects. Jesse, you wanna work us through that, please?
Sure, thank you. So, so last month, we went over, and was approved by the planning board, an amendment to, to help increase density in the CBD, which unanimously was approved. After some rethinking of the, the process, staff decided that we need to revisit this to, to ensure that the, the intent of the zoning ordinance, which was to place performance points to allow for density to continue, but to, to rethink and maybe add more items in the, in the performance points tables. So, what, what we've done is we've created what you see here on the PowerPoint slide and in your package. We, we have a proposed and current performance table standards, and to, to revise you guys on what this performance table does, is that you have your, your base, base residential density standards, or dwelling units per acre that are, that we have currently, and what happens is if a, if a developer or landowner wants to use performance points to up their density, they're able to do that with the performance points on this table we have. The proposed, the current table shows one point for infill development of two acres or less, redevelopment of, for one point, which, mind you, is equivalent to decorative street lighting. Redevelopment of sites with existing buildings and infrastructure is two points and three in the CBD, and redevelopment of existing building is two points and three in the CBD. What I've proposed is to give more incentive to infill and redevelopment of existing buildings. I think it would, would be an incentive to, to help some of the, the older buildings with blight that are vacant, and by giving more points, you're allowing developers to, to pursue and build more density to, to pay back what it costs to redevelop those sites. So, I've, I've put in, instead of one point for infill, three points. Instead of two or three points for redevelopment with existing buildings and infrastructure, five and six points in CBD, and then redevelopment of existing buildings, which is currently two and three in the CBD, to five and six in the CBD. You'll see on the proposed table, marked in yellow at the points, which, which points we're proposing to change. There's been two added items that were not actually on the, the current chart, in which those two added items were to incentivize density downtown, which was, like I said, approved at the last meeting. But, one of the additions was addition of street level retail on multiple level multi-use development, and CBD would be six additional points. And then addition of pervious paved or indoor parking, one, one space per unit would be an additional four points. With those added points, what you'd have is you would, you would keep your, you'd keep the intent of the code, which is building design standards and landscaping and infrastructure points that are currently in the performance tables, they would, they would stay intact, and we would get, developers would get their added density by doing those, those few items that we've added and giving more points for redevelopment and infill. The next slide shows the, the corresponding tables that, that show the density that you would be allowed with the points that are given. The first one is the proposed one, and the second one's current. You, you'll see that currently twenty, twenty and up, twenty points and up, like I said, goes, goes with that last table. So, twenty points and up would get you sixteen additional units per acre. Last meeting, we proposed that in the CBD, there's no density requirement. We're, we're saying that with the points that we're giving and the added points, and the added categories, that twenty-seven and up in the CBD are only restricted by the height limit. And the reasoning, the reasoning behind that, again, was to, to keep the intent of the zoning ordinance in place and give added incentive for redevelopment, adding retail storefront, while you still keep your landscaping and building design standards in place. So, that's, that in a nutshell, and I'm, I'm happy to entertain any questions and, and anybody that has questions on those, I'll help you figure it out.
Are there any questions? Judy?
I like the direction that this is going in, and I think it's definitely helpful. My question is, did you do any conferring with developers while you were working on this to see if, you know, this was something, obviously, I think it's a step in the right direction, but is it enough to open doors to get those buildings actually moving into a development phase rather than just sitting there? Is this the only thing that's the roadblock?
I believe so. So, since I've been here since January, I've received several phone calls about bringing infill lots into, into Morganton, and when, when I look at a point three acre lot, which, you know, how many downtowns have massive acreage to accommodate for, for performance points? So, when you, when you look at lots, similar to what we showed last week, which is up on the, on the board here. Either way, that, that slide is in your, in your handout. It's the CBD density package. It shows that on, on a lot of point five, six acres, with giving these performance points, you can maximize what you put on there, whereas before, you could get, you could get two units per acre in CBD. With, with performance points for a similar lot too, on that handout, I've done an example performance point table at the end of that CBD density handout, and it shows a breakdown of possible points that you could get in order to be able to receive the twenty-six or more points for unlimited, well, not, I wouldn't say unlimited, but up to the height limit. And it, it's pretty easily attained when you, when you're, when you add the underground or pervious parking, or when you do the, the addition of the, the street level retail, which is what we kinda want down here anyway, mixed use. When you add the, the infill, and then the other smaller points that we already previously have, I think this, this gives the incentive needed to, to be able to bring those developments downtown while not hurting the aesthetics that were placed in the, in the, in the zoning ordinance.
Have you given any thought to how to incentivize in a similar way some of these big vacant buildings that are outside of the CBD?
Yeah, and the, the redevelopment points, the five and six points that, let me go back to that on my, on my screen. So, when you, when you go back to the, to the two tables, the, the redevelopment of existing sites and redevelopment of existing buildings went from two to three points to five and six points, which, it's only one point difference between HID or MID to, or any other zone to CBD. It's just one added point for CB to help you get to that number you need in order to use the height as the max. So, and then, and then also the, the infill, the infill points, that can be outside of the CBD. There's a current, there's a current development going on now, right outside of downtown, and with these given points, you would get the required density you need in order to not need as much land.
Yeah.
So, it's an infill proj, it's a redevelopment and infill project that with, with this performance point table, you'd get what you need without having sprawling land in order to do it.
Right. I'm just thinking, you know, the school of math and science and some of the other things that are on the horizon, it might be an opportunity to kind of revitalize some of these
Right.
big buildings that might not be in the CBD.
Yes, it would, it would definitely give incentive outside of the CBD, more chances for, for density.
Right.
That's kinda one of the main reasons we did the redevelopment thing. There's not a whole lot of, other than this building that was done, you know, fifteen years ago or so, there's not a whole lot of other downtown buildings that would, would accomplish the redevelopment. So, it's, it's more or less things you see on Fleming Drive that would, would help get those to the place we wanna see them.
Right. Thank you.
Welcome.
Other questions, other questions or comments? I wanna hit you up on the proposed points spreadsheet.
Go.
The very bottom talks about maximum possible points.
Uh huh.
That number probably is not fixed at twenty-six, is it?
No, so, on this, on this next slide, the, the twenty-six is the maximum you'd get before. That number, that twenty-six would, would obviously change on the proposed slide. That just wasn't edited.
Okay.
It was kind of a built-in table. But, on the, the next page, when you see the table four point five, you'll see that
That you're twenty-seven and above, I see.
Twenty, yeah, so the, the max that was there before would get you the max that was there before, but when you get above that twenty, twenty-seven, you'll get, you'll get to the restricted only height limit.
Yep. I was gonna also add a question to that. As you increase densities, demand for water and sewer go up also, and my question is, does a comment about that need to be included? When somebody comes in here and proposes a high-density development, but yet the infrastructure isn't adequate to, to take care of it?
Right. With, without some economic development grant, that, bringing those utilities up to where they would need to be would be something they would need to, to obviously pay for. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be added tax money to citizens unless there was some kind of economic development incentive, but this would be something that the developer would, would bring to the table if they wanted, if they needed higher capacity water or sewer lines, things like that.
Well, my, my question is, is whether or not we could respond to someone's request to, for economic development, but yet the infrastructure, it's gonna take time to get it done.
Right.
So, in my opinion, as a comment, that restricted by height limits as well as access to water and sewer, is that, would that be in a
Yeah. That would be something that we could, we could add to that, for sure.
Well, I would, I would propose that as an amendment to this text, this text amendment.
I think that's a good idea. Definitely something you can add as a comment in gaining those points.
Cause I, cause I'd like to see that the performance points would be unlimited. Coming back to, for example, building design, there's nothing in there really awards a builder that comes in here with green building techniques. Let's say he wants to put a Tesla roof on a building.
Right.
Do we not reward something like that?
That, that's definitely something I've thought of, and I, I added the pervious pavement thing, but adding solar panels or renewable energy or, you know, LED or
Or just green building.
Green buildings in general would, that could be something that we could definitely bring up at a future meeting when we see more of that. I, I think the sky's the limit on what we can do with, with this type of table, whether, you know, in the future, if it, if things don't work out, we can take points away and add points in different areas. But, I think, you know, we could definitely add the, the utility and infrastructure portion of it now, and then rethink and, and think about other incentives for, for green buildings.
Well, and we also offer through the electric department incentives for solar and, and that type of thing, so it's, maybe there's other areas that we can look to
But, but the question is, can you incorporate it in here so that
Into zoning?
developer wants to increase his density.
Incorporate it into performance points, probably.
Tool in his toolbox that he can incorporate in his project.
Yes, so, for instance, if you, if you looked at
I kinda like holding a carrot out for somebody to do something that's innovative.
I think what Jesse's saying though is that, you know, basically what Jesse's saying is pass this, and then if we have a chance to research leads and the other stuff.
Right.
We can do that as a next step.
Yeah, this would, this would get us to our
Stepwise thing.
This would get us to our, our density, you know, to allow density downtown, so we don't have as much restrictive density downtown, because the, I think the intent was there before, it was just missed, because what you have downtown are smaller lots, where most downtowns, what you wanna do with vacant small lots is, is infill those, bring them up, and be able to pay that back with, with more units in the front or back. I think what you can get mostly in downtown with point two acre lots is, you know, two, four unit apartments upstairs, which would maximize and allow for our, our adopted master, downtown master plan to be fulfilled, whereas right now, there's just, if you took every vacant lot downtown and with our current density requirement, you would never get that many, that many new units in. Unless you did some major demoing and, and recombination of lots and had a huge available lot, which we don't, any of right now.
I think, I think we can look at, we can look at a, a density bonus for, when you get outside of downtown, when you get larger vacant lots, that maybe you're using LEED certified or, or other certification, green certification products, and we just, we'd need some time to research that and, and calibrate that for traffic and, and other impacts that it, that it may have, so.
Yeah, for instance, so the, the example table from that CBD density handout, I mean, if you added more points for other items, you could, you could still gain the points you need in order to develop more density. If you don't do decker, street lighting, or facade articulation, maybe you, you get two points for, you know, adding green building items. So, it's, it's something to look at, for sure.
Well, and my last comment is, once you've achieved twenty-seven or higher, what would be the limit? Is there an upper limit as to the, the density requirement?
Yeah, so currently in the code, you've got thirty-five feet for a residential building and sixty-five feet for a commercial building. If you did a mixed-use building, you could get commercial on the bottom, residential on top, and you'd get, you'd build up to sixty-five feet. If you just do solely residential, you're not gonna get the, the added points for multiple level retail, and you'd only get thirty-five feet with residential. But, you could still get a pretty good amount of density with thirty-five feet downtown too. But, it does, it does protect impact with that height limit, which we haven't proposed to change, and we don't think it should.
So, the height limit, there's one control, but if they do, do this way.
The performance points protects, protects it that way, yep.
So, there, there will be a limit on the, the dwelling units per acre in this So there will be a limit on the dwelling units per acre in this project, okay.
And a person could get, if they developed outside the central business district, a person could get, under this code, could get up to, let's say they were in the HID, they can get up to the 20 dwelling units per acre, which is pretty significant.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Not, I'll open it again to the public if there's someone here in the public that would like to comment, seeing none. We're back to the commission and, oh, I'm sorry.
Bedantic lawyer here has one additional change that needs to be clarified.
I forgot to say that.
Yeah, table 4.3 still sets an absolute maximum number of dwelling units per acre in CBD of 20. So it wouldn't do you any good to be able to increase your density by 20 units when you still run, you bump against that maximum. So that needs to be changed, too. Jesse and I had talked about this.
I've got that note in here and just missed it. Yeah, so what Louis is saying is, in order to create this change, there's going to be changes in table 4.2 and 3, which would, just in nature, change the table.
I don't think we were proposing to change 4.2, were we?
Well, that would
Okay.
The base, it's the performance max that has to change.
Yeah.
To comport with the, and I think what we had talked about was changing it to none, NA.
Right.
Because it would depend, if you could get that many performance points, you're limited strictly by, there is no limit except, of course, to the height and the other building code type things.
It would basically just be matching table 4.3 with 4.5. So it's no additional change in code, it's just changing the tables.
Okay.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we got that.
Thanks for the, thanks for that clarity. Is there anyone else in the audience? Hearing none, I'll close this, bring it back to the commission. Is there someone on the commission that would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve as submitted with the changes that Louis brought up.
He recommended a text amendment to the ordinance, section 4.3. And would you include the suggestions that were made? Can I have a second over here with Mr. Wallace? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay. Next item on the agenda tonight is consideration to amend the zoning ordinance. This is table 3.1, and it's to add the neighborhood conservation overlay as well as the corridor overlay as overlay exceptions or what I consider deletions for pawn shops within permitted uses that are shown on that table 3.1. Jesse, you want to
Sure.
cover that, please?
So with any new ordinance, in order, sometimes, you know, things are missed, which you would only find through development applications. This particular one was brought up during a recent meeting in which, for the use of pawn shops, overlay exceptions, or how you said, deletions, which should also be the right verbiage, are not, they're allowed in MID, HID, and CBD, but not under the overlay of the River District overlay. We're proposing to add the neighborhood conservation overlay to that because the neighborhood conservation overlay exists to protect residential uses as well as the corridor overlay, which we all know is a 250-foot buffer on each side of the middle of the road for each corridor. We think that it was probably not meant to be this way, but that we should probably have, it wasn't meant to just be River District overlay, but we should add neighborhood conservation and corridor overlay as deletions or exemptions, exceptions to the current table, use table. And then you would have your similar conditions that have that use within it, 3.4.5A, as the conditions placed upon that use as well. And it's as simple as that, just adding the corridor overlay and neighborhood conservation overlay to those exceptions under that use.
Okay, you lost me.
So this would be a prohibited use there, in a nutshell, is what you're saying?
Yes, under those overlays, it would be a prohibited use.
It's not prohibited right now, but when we put those, okay.
Yeah, and it would be prohibited in neighborhoods and along our corridors that we're trying to spruce up.
Yes, okay, gotcha.
I think it was just kind of missed when the ordinance was written. So it's as simple as that, really.
Okay.
And the conditions under 3.4.5A are the ones that talk about that if you're going to place it, let's say, for example, in the MID, then it has to be, it has to front on a arterial street or a collector's street. And then it gives some other conditions in there. But it's similar to all the other retail uses that are allowed within the MID under conditions.
Exactly, I can help you with those minutes. I know that was a little confusing.
I was just thinking of locations that were currently pawn shops. If they vacate that location and it's under that corridor, then they're no longer permitted to, permitted to use under that, correct?
That would be correct.
And there are also, to keep in mind, there are current neighborhood conservation overlays that are within the MID zone. So with our current code, you could therefore put a pawn shop in a neighborhood if the base district is MID. So this just kind of protects the
This gives the overlay protection, it says you can't do it.
Right.
Okay.
It's still allowed in the base district, just not with the overlay on top of it.
Gotcha.
Are there any questions? Hearing none, I'll open this up to the public for comment. And seeing none, anyone in the audience to step to the podium? I'll close this item off to the public and bring it to the commission. Do I have a motion, further discussion, first of all?
Salute.
Slow second. So I've got a, who made the motion?
Wait.
You made the question, okay. And then I've got a second with Mr. Wallace. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, we'll move on to item number four on our agenda, which is consideration to amend section 4.8 of the zoning ordinance. And this is building design standards, and there's a paragraph 4.8.2, which deals with applicability. And to, and into this is to add a 50% or greater of an exterior remodel to a non-residential development. Jesse, can you put this in plain language?
Sure. So in plain language, what we have now is similar to the last item. Until things come about in the development world, you find that there's some misses in the zoning ordinance. This one in particular came about where a existing location did not, your current triggers for building design standards are expansion of a building, rezone, or change of use. So those are major change of use. So those trigger what our building design standards have, which are vertical articulation, building out on the building, certain facade details, to name a few. What we have is a situation where an established business is not adding footprint to the building, not adding 20% addition to their building. It's an existing location, so it's not a change of use, and it's not a rezone. But they're redoing the entire facade of the location. And how that could be a big impact is, there are many chain restaurants or really any development that can be built under our current zoning ordinance, where you would not have any building design standards. This is kind of a stretch, but this is in California. And under our zoning ordinance, this would be approved under our current zoning ordinance because if they did not increase the footprint or the square footage of their building, and they just wanted to update this KFC. So that's kind of, in layman's terms, how that is, is without an expansion of 20%, without a change of use or without a rezone, we can't touch building design. So what we've proposed is, if you have an existing location and you want to change over 50% of the facade of the outside of the building, then you have to come up to our current building design standards with your remodel. Without it, there's nothing I can do with the building design standards of a building, so.
And just to clarify, that's 50% of a facade. It doesn't have to mean 50% of all four sides. If they only wanted to do 50% of the front, that's included in this.
Right.
And the other thing that I would add is that if anyone's renovating a building and they're more than 50%, then they've got to bring it up to the current building code. So it's really no different than what they're already having to do.
And if you're changing the exterior of your building anyway, what's the reason why we wouldn't make you bring it up to our building standards? I think that that was kind of a miss that it had to be a 20%, addition in order to do that. So this just proposes to add that amendment. Any questions on that?
If over 50% of renovation interior, then they have to, they have to come up to
No, this is just for the exterior.
No, what I said was if it's
Renovations, interior.
For building code. I was liking it to building code.
Well, the language includes exterior, so I think that
Yeah, I was just, I was drawing an analogy between this 50% and the building code 50%.
You used a good example. Any questions from the commission to Jesse or Philip on this?
Is remodeling 50% if I were to repaint it?
No.
No?
No, it'd be structural renovations. If you wanted to paint or, you know, signage or flags, things like that, wouldn't count. It would be 50% of an actual structural
A building permit.
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't need a building permit, thank you. You don't need a building permit for repainting or, you know, adding a different type of grass or things like that. It would be structural.
Okay. And you said luckily if you did 50% of just the front, that would have to comply with this, but the rest of the sides would not?
Well, any side that you're doing the renovations on.
If you were proposing to renovate only the front,
Okay.
then 50%, if you're renovating more than 50% of that, it would apply.
And the important part of that is if your primary wall, your primary facade on a major corridor, a lot of times what you see is businesses just doing that visible portion. So when you do it by each wall, that protects our building design standards.
Okay.
Other than the image and aesthetics, what are the potential pushbacks? If any cost or anything, or just freedom to do what you want?
I didn't want to overreach, so I didn't want to say, you know, any exterior renovation would be included under this. And if you wanted to do some minor exterior renovations, adding whatever it might be, I didn't want to overreach and make anyone that tries to make their building look a little better have to meet these standards. But I think over 50% of an exterior remodel is pretty significant. So it wouldn't hurt the small guys, and it wouldn't hurt even some of the larger guys that are just trying to do a couple added features. It would just protect us on, one of the current projects I've seen, it's literally an entire remodel of the exterior. And I was racking my brain trying to figure out how I could make this site come up to at least some kind of building design standard, and there was just no trigger that allowed it. So this would not hurt the small guys or small renovations, but it would capture our building code for those over 50%.
This is not out of line at all, and it's typical language in zoning ordinances to bring non-conformities into compliance.
And you're really, when you approach or you go over 50%, the languages that I've seen, in my experience, is that, you know, we don't go out and, and some codes go out and make you bring your facade up to code within a certain number of years. But, you know, in reading this code, that's not the intent, or wasn't the intent, we didn't want to do that. But a lot of codes use the language at time of redevelopment. Well, if you're renovating more than 50% of your facade, you're redeveloping that facade. And the intent of the code is to bring those corridors up to standard.
That's right.
And I think this does that.
Mm-hmm.
Are we protected against this?
Not currently. You could go in and build this KFC right now, if you have an existing KFC. Not if it was a new, now, a new building, I want to clarify, a new building would have to come up to our current code.
An existing KFC that's here right now could redo their front anyway. They could have a big giant blue straw tower.
Pawn shop, or any use could build something similar to this without
We need to approve this right away.
I can see that in California.
Well, luckily, so it's not scaring you guys, luckily the remodel that's taking place doesn't meet all of our design standards, but it's not one of these, so.
It doesn't look like a satellite.
Doesn't look like a Jack in the Box or one of these KFCs, so.
But if somebody wants to do, say, electric neon yellow paint next to something else, we have no statute or control.
But that does bring the question about, you know, chains, chain line, and they have their own things that they want to build to represent their image, hotels and restaurants and so forth. So if they had a national thing where to get a franchise, you had to build it the way they wanted it, we would be confronted with those, wouldn't we?
I've, in my career, and I'm sure Philip's probably never seen that either, what I've noticed in my career doing this is every chain has a list of eight, 10 different building plans. And what they do is they don't necessarily read our ordinances. They skim through it and they find, you know, Morgantons is a seven out of 10 on the hard scale, and they send that in. They've got the ability, and architects, to switch things up. So it would not deter someone from being here, we would just make them come up to our standards, which aren't, which, as Judy alluded to, aren't different from most up-to-date zoning ordinances.
So if we wanted to have a look downtown, it's like Asheville does downtown. There's certain areas that you built in, they wanted you to look.
That's right.
Well, that might fit into Asheville in some places.
The Biltmore House, for example, you know, they built a hotel out there, and everything in that area matches like the Biltmore.
But that's exactly what happened with the River District and the Corridor District, is the city said, you guys and the council said, we want it to look a certain way in these major corridors. And I haven't, I haven't, in my career, I have not found a national chain or any other retailer yet that if they want to go into an area would not, or has not, change their design or tweak their design. I've had a number of cases where all I've had to do is go to Google Images and type in the name of the place, and I find 10 different things where they've used different models for what they wanted to do.
I've never seen building design standards or landscaping designs that deter someone from locating. You're going to hear that sometimes, but I've never seen it, ever.
I've seen, in the nicer towns that have had the stricter standards, you suddenly see a KFC or a McDonald's that's really a classic thing, wow! And basically someone held their feet to the fire.
Right.
And said, here's our standards, you meet our standards.
Right, and the intent of that is for longevity and keeping people wanting to come here for the future because building design standards change a lot, and the way buildings look change a lot. But I believe our current building design standards keep a nice, uniform standard that won't be ugly in 15 years. So it's, and you know, it's something that we can look at later and change when we need to, when the times change. But this is definitely something I think needs to be added.
Any other questions or comments? Not, I'll ask if there's any comment to be made from the audience in favor or against this amendment. Hearing none, we're going to close that, bring it back to the commission. Is there someone that would like to frame a, a amendment, or, excuse me, a motion for this amendment?
I'll make a motion to approve the amendment as presented by staff.
Okay, I have a, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the answer in favor of, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? That one is approved to be represented to City Council. Item five, which is our last item on the agenda tonight, is a consideration to amend the ordinance, Section 4.8.4, the neighborhood conservation overlay residential design standards, to meet or comply with state statute 160A as an apple, dash 381. Jesse?
Sure, and this, this should be the shortest of the presentations, and the one that hurts me the most as a planner, but you see this a lot in, in planning, state statutes change, and things that you like about ordinances don't meet the current rules in the state. The one that applies here is the new state statute GS 160A 381, which actually passed near the end of 2015, which stated that it limits the, the city's ability to have building design standards on residential, single-family residential lots, outside of lot orientation, height, and bulk, but they don't allow for building design standards such as wall materials, roofing, and garages, so our current neighborhood conservation overlay residential design standards, that's a lot taken, does not meet this GS 160A 381. So, our simple proposal is to reword this section, to say the following are recommended design elements, and within each subsection, change all the uses of the word shall to the word should, because we can't require it anymore, the entire state cannot. So, this would, this would just take out the requirement and, and add that we recommend that within the neighborhood conservation overlay, that we would ask you, please make these houses look a certain way. So, that's all I got for that one.
Okay. Any questions for Jesse? Hearing none, again, any comments from members of the audience, and none, bring it back. Do I have a recommendation or a motion for the neighborhood conservation overlay residential design standard to be modified or amended as...
So, move.
First and a second. Any further discussion?
Really, no other choice.
Hearing none, I'll call for the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, that'll go up to City Council at their one October meeting.
That's it.
Thank you, Jesse, for that. As far as other items for discussion, you were given a memorandum from the city staff, which addresses one of the requests that the, the commission made to be examined, and this deals with attendance by applicants at a planning and zoning commission meeting. I want to bring that to your attention, that we will ask to have that placed on the October agenda for review and ultimately hopefully approval. Any questions on that? Is there any other items of discussion to be brought for this auspicious group? Hearing none, I'll move, we adjourn.